Let me go ahead and call the regular meeting of the Rio Grande City Gruia Independent School District to order. It is now 6:42 PM, Wednesday, March 8th, 2023. And we're located at the Ringo Delimitre Cafeteria. As always, Mr. Garza, thank you for your hospitality. We very much appreciate it. For purposes of determining quorum, let me go and take roll call. Dr. Veronica Barrera. Mr. Lizard Velazquez Jr., not present. Mr. Johnny Pope IV. Noe Castillo is out, he's not feeling well, not present. Mr. Basilio Divarreal Jr.
Present.
Mr. Jay Peña.
Present.
And myself, Edira Mides, present. Let the Mides reflect that we do have a quorum to proceed. Section two, because we are going to recognize law enforcement. Ugo Garcia, chief, acting chief, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without doubt, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Ramírez, board president.
Ugo, not yet. There's just the pledge. Section three, approval of minutes for the regular board meeting of February 7th, 2023. Do you have a motion or any discussion on section three?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the regular board meeting, the minutes for the regular board meeting of February the 7th of the year 2023.
There's a motion by Mr. Real, is there a second to that motion?
Seconded.
Second by Mr. Peña. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Section four, public forum. Anything on the public forum? Alright, thank you. Section five, recognitions, there are two. But because of the children present here today, we're going to start with the Battle of the Books being presented by Nidia Benítez.
Good evening, Board President, Board members, Mr. Peña, public, general public. I'm here, here, and I'm very proud to announce that we have our contestants for the Battle of the Books for 2022, 2023. And I would like to call them to forward. So I, we had two competitions happening within the last, within the month of February. One was at the district level and one was at the regional level. So I'm going to call the students that, some of the students went to both, but not all of them. So I'm going to call the students that won first place as a team for their campus. So I am going to start with elementary, eighth elementary students, if you can come forward. And we have Diana Ovaya-García, Adrián Villalobo, Odilia Garza, Eloy Garza, and Victor González. These students read four chapter books. They were assigned by our region. They had to read them on their own and then they go through rigorous, a rigorous, rigorous test. And they were the first, the first place for our district. So once again, let's give them a round of applause.
Should we take it all together or all?
Yes.
You want the whole group together, Ms.?
Yeah, okay, just stay there, guys, be patient with it. For our middle schools, we have Ace Middle School who won first place. And we have contestants James Margot, Jaislyn García, Gianna Garza, and Siana Mendoza. Middle school. Once again, the students read four novels at their level, at the middle school level. And at the high school level, we have Gruia High School and, Gruia High School. We have our contestants Esmeralda Inojosa, Sarah Salinas, Mia Martínez, and Kiara Valencia. We want to do a picture?
Yes.
You're going to bring them over here to the stairs?
Yes.
Yes.
So as I promised, there were two competitions. The, this other team that, that are teams that I want to recognize, these are the all-star teams. These are the ones that represented Rio Grande City Gruia ISD at Region One. And these teams, these students were individually, they earned individual higher points. Okay, so we have Eloy Garza, Diana Ovaya-García, Jimena Mata, and Victor González. At the elementary. At the middle school level, we have James Margot, Gianna Garza, Jaislyn García, and Filiberto Martínez. And at the high school level, we have Sarah Madison Salinas, Esmeralda Marinojosa, Sylvia López, and Jaime Lee Ramírez. Thank you. I just want to say that there are wonderful things happening at our libraries. And I have something very exciting that I want to share, well, kind of share. I'm going to give you a peek only. We just received a grant solely for the libraries. I cannot elaborate on where it's coming from yet, but I can tell you that it is very good news. Nine of our 15 libraries received that grant. So I am very proud of our librarians. They applied for it and, and they got it. So now we don't know the amounts, but I, I understand it's a good money. It's good money.
Congratulations to everybody.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Alright, next recognition is RGC GISD Police Security Department. Now, Mr. Garcia, the floor is yours.
Talk good, talk good. Thank you, guys. Good evening, Mr. Ramírez, board president, our entire school board of trustees and superintendent, Peña. It gives me great pleasure to speak about the fine individuals I have the joy of working with every day. I speak about the loyal, hard-working members that make up the RGC GISD Police Department and security staff. They are charged with maintaining the safety of our campuses and facilities. Not enough can be said of their dedication they display in their jobs. They attend trainings and practice scenarios after scenarios to ensure no harm comes to our students or staff. We want to thank the Public Relations Department for putting together a video that highlights some of their trainings our officers go through. We have been able to attend these trainings because of your support. We know how important safety is to our district and we wish, thank you for always doing what needs to be done to make our job possible. Special thanks to the outside agencies that were on hand and assisted and have always been available for any emergency situation that may arise. In no particular order, we have the Texas Department of Public Safety, the City of Rio Grande, Homeland Security, US Border Patrol, ATF, US Marshals, Texas Rangers, Starr County Sheriff's Department, the 229 District Attorney, Starr County Attorney, and DEA. We hope you enjoy the video. And once again, thank you, school board and Mr. Peña, for you believing us. I have the Texas Department of, South Texas Director, Victor Escalón, that would like to say some words.
Of course. So, good afternoon, everybody, or good evening, everybody. My name is Victor Escalón, Regional Director for DPS South Texas. And Chief Garcia, thank you for recognizing us today. And, but most importantly, that day when we came to assist Chief Garcia, he was a true professional, wanted to get the job done. We wanted to solve the problem quickly. And on DPS, we brought in our CID, Rangers, SWAT, helicopters, troopers. Everything we had in our arsenal, we brought to assist Chief Garcia. Mr. Peña, I met you that day and it was very nice to meet you, true professional. It was an honor to meet you. And it was sad, we had to work, meet in those conditions. But we had one thing in mind, is solve the problem quickly. And, and working together, the only way we can do this is working together to solve problems. And it was, it was handled. I want to take this opportunity because I see, you know, DPS troopers, thank you. I see the school district police, the sheriff's department, border patrol, security officers for the school district, the DA's office, feds were there. The list goes on and on that want to come together. It's not about egos, it's not about rank, it's about how do we solve this. And you made it easy. Mr. Peña, you made it easy to work together, that's all I had to say. So, thank you so much and again, thank you for the recognition for DPS.
Thank you. You going to play a video?
Let's get a 911 call, shots firing at our building.
Marking what?
At RGC GISD, safety is our top priority. And we take pride in the safety of our students and staff across our district. Our police officers and security personnel work hard and tirelessly, day in and day out, to protect our students and staff. Thank you for the difference you make each and every day. We are incredibly appreciative of the work that you all do to keep our schools secure. Thank you for serving our school district. We appreciate you. At RGC GISD, the safety of our students and staff is our top priority. Our Rio Grande City Gruia ISD Police Department have attended various trainings, specifically one by the name of Alert: Active Shooter Response Level One. This dynamic course of instruction is designed to prepare the first responder to ICs, distract and neutralize an active shooter, exterior response to active events, or ERAS. This course is designed to prepare first responders for an open-air active shooter encounter. These trainings have taken place across our district at Ringled Middle School, Fort Ringled, Rio Grande City High School, Gruia High School, and South Texas College, just to name a few. We would like to express our gratitude to everyone who participated and conducted these training sessions to keep our police officers and security guards up to date with the latest strategies to help keep our students and staff safe.
Nope, there's going to be no questions, but I do have, I'm going to give everybody the opportunity to say a few words because I think that deserves, at the very least, a few words. Mr. Basilio, Barrial?
Yeah, just on behalf of the whole community, it's not only, it's not only the schools, it's not only the teachers, the whole community, I call it the whole community. I want to thank all the people from law enforcement, just too many to mention. You know who you are for helping us out in one of, I guess, one of our darkest days. But you all came through like champions. I guess we have the Director of DPS and we have all these other people, but I heard they brought down the, you name it, all the officers, helicopters and everything else. But to DA, custom, DA, everybody in law enforcement, thank you for all your help. But it's like the gentleman said a little while ago, only things can be achieved through cooperation of everybody, organized cooperation. And that's how great things happen. And what I mean, great things, that's how things get done. And thank you, all of you, all of you in law enforcement, for a job well done. Thank you for basically helping our community on that particular day. Hopefully it'll never ever happen again, but one thing we can say, we're ready if it ever does. Thank you very much.
Mr. Jay Peña?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just throw something in right quick, just for a very personal, personal reason. I've always had a very profound sense of appreciation and respect for law enforcement. I always have. Some of my best friends are members of law enforcement and I can't thank you enough. And I can tell you that nobody really understands how much someone appreciates someone in law enforcement until you really need them. And unfortunately, in the, in the time that we live in now, we never know when that is. But it feels awfully wonderful to have you all there. And so thank you all so much for what you do.
Mr. John Pope?
Just want to reiterate, thank you for everything, for continuing to put your all's lives on the line and safety for our children. Without you all, you know, I mean, I feel much safer. I know our children feel safer. And because of that incident that happened, you know, without you also, I guess, eagerness to jump in there and, and take care of the situation, who knows what would have happened, but thank God for that you all were there.
On behalf of every parent, I think, from this district, I want to thank every law enforcement officer that responded that day. And thank you so much.
I still recall that day like it was, like it was yesterday. I got a call early in the morning. I rushed out there because I wanted to be there. I want to be present, no matter what happened. I guess somehow I get into, I guess what they'll call the command post. And it was incredible how many decisions were made, you know, in a room. How many individual, how many parties there were to this. I mean, there's, there's never going to be enough ways, enough manners, enough words to say thank you. Because it took so many of you all. It's incredible, just looking around, you all fill up the back row and none of you hesitated. You rushed out there, you know, you did what you had to do without blinking. And I saw it firsthand, you know, we were scared, a lot of people were scared. But seeing that you all were there and how seriously you all took it and the manner in which you approached it, incredibly professional, incredibly professional. No one can ever, will never be able to guess or make divine intervention and say when this is going to happen. Nobody expected it to happen, but you all took incredible action. You responded the way we were trained to do. And I know what it is too. I live at home, I have a wife who was also a CBP officer. And you wonder, you know, if something could happen any day. So like Jay says, please know you all are truly appreciated. Everything you do does not go unnoticed. And there just aren't enough words to say how beautiful and what a miracle that occurred that day from what I saw. It was amazing, honestly, thank you. And I was there until they literally told me to leave. So because of you, the situation was de-escalated. Because of you, the district was safe. Because of you, the district will continue to be safe. And I applaud your effort to keep collaborating with each other in case, should anything like this even remotely happen or happen in an adjacent district. Because I hope they have the help that we had that day. So I mean, honestly, from the, from personal, from the bottom of my heart, there's just not enough words.
And we're not done, sir. We have some trainings coming up this summer. We have about four more trainings that are 32 hours. So we'll have enough training, we'll have more training coming up.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all so very much for being here. You deserve, you deserve the best. Thank you very, very much.
If we can have the, our Border Patrol, United States Border Patrol, step forward to take a picture with us? After that, of course, we'll have our Texas Department of Public Safety, Starr County Sheriff's Office also, and the City of Rio Grande City. We're going to take them individually, each different component. The City of Rio Grande City also, and our Sheriff's Department, if you could join us on the stage. If our security officers can make your way over here to the stage, you'll be next, security officers. Wonderful picture. Keep on backing the blue. Big smiles. And now our Rio Grande City GISD Police Department. We can have our RGC GISD Police Department to the stage. Once again, thank you very, very much.
Mr. Peña, did you ever respond? Let me ask you.
A motion to...
I motion to approve everything.
Approve everything on the docket, I second. I second immediately.
All right, that concludes our recognitions. Section six, reports and information. Item number one, update on students, staff highlights. Mr. Agent Osuna presenting.
Good evening, Mr. Ramirez, our outstanding school board. Mr. Peña Superintendent. As is customary, we show a highlight video of what happened on the previous month up to actually yesterday. So this is for the month of February and a little bit of March. Hopefully you all enjoy our wonderful accomplishments.
RGCG ISD students were surprised with a delicious cupcake treat on Valentine's Day by our sensational superintendent, Mr. Adolfo Peña Jr., and the School Board of Trustees. RGCG ISD kicked off National Counseling Week by presenting our wonderful counselors with appreciation certificates. We would like to thank all of our counselors for everything they do for our students and staff. On Professional Learning Day, RGCG ISD hosted training sessions across our district for all of our teachers. We would like to thank everyone who participated and conducted these trainings. The RGCG ISD Elementary District UIL Meet was a success. Congratulations to all of our students and staff for all of their hard work and dedication. Congratulations to AC2E Middle School student Aurora Serna. Her drawing was selected as a finalist and was displayed during the RGVTABE Conference in South Padre Island. RGCG ISD hosted a district spelling bee for elementary and middle school students. Thank you to everyone who participated and made this event possible and a success. Rio Grande City High Schools' very own Daniela and Jose represented RGCG ISD at the All-State 5A Symphonic Band and the All-State 6A Symphony Orchestra. RGCG ISD hosted the superintendent's math challenge. Our students had a great time answering questions and earning a fidget toy. The Second Annual Battle of the Books was a wonderful event. We would like to thank all of the participants, librarians, and administrators for making this a sensational event. We would like to congratulate our Rio Grande City High School Mariachi Cascabel and Gruia High School Mariachi de Plata for their sensational performances at the 2023 UIL State Mariachi. Both mariachis earned a superior rating Division One. Congratulations to our RGCG ISD students who made it to regionals at the Region One Battle of the Books Competition at the middle school level. Thank you for all of your hard work. Congratulations to our RGCG ISD CTE students for showcasing and placing at the San Antonio Rodeo. Your hard work and commitment is surely noticed. Keep up the great work. The Mariachi Cascabel and Mariachi Gruia de Plata made us proud by performing on the main floor in the state capitol in Austin, Texas. It was an honor for them to be mentioned in the House and Senate floors. Great job to our mariachi students and instructors. This has been Tatiana Hernandez from AC2E Elementary. February was sensational and March is looking up to be just as great.
Before we play the next video. Last month was Career and Technology Month. So we did prepare a video for them, but I do have to mention Tatiana Hernandez, one of our wonderful students at ACE Elementary. For the past couple of months, she's been doing our voiceovers. And I just, I told her this time, we got to say your name. Okay, credit is due, she has a wonderful voiceover. So now we have a CNT video for, well, for you all.
Here at Rio Grande City GRUISD, we provide high-quality career and technical programs that equip our students with the academic and technical understanding, training, and skills they need to excel in their future and develop into lifelong learners. CTE prepares our students for the world and work of tomorrow by introducing them to the workplace, to skills, and provides accessible hands-on experiences to our students. We at RGCGISD are proud of our sensational CTE programs and our diligent students and staff who consistently devote themselves to their work. The ultimate goal is for students to successfully transition into their top choice of school or find a terrific job using their knowledge and expertise they've obtained here at RGCGISD. On behalf of myself, your Superintendent of Schools, and our entire School Board of Trustees, we would like to thank our RGCGISD CTE programs as well as our CTE teachers and staff and our Director, Mrs. Adelina Verial, for always going above and beyond for our sensational students.
Item number two, report on construction projects. Mr. Agent Osuna presenting.
We have a couple of projects that we put into a video so you can see the progress that we're undergoing so far.
The Veterans All-Weather Track Field will be the first track in campus history which will be used for all physical education and athletic activities. The track will have an all-weather polyurethane surface with red six-lane stripes and long triple landing pits with runways and sand pits. There will also be a high-jump pad with reinforced concrete and a pole-vault pad with a runway and stainless steel pole-vault vault. The newly renovated Building Four is larger and has more space for offices. Building Four will house all of the departments that were previously housed in separate buildings, including purchasing, payroll, insurance, et cetera. The multipurpose and the Student and Faculty Center will house the main networking station which goes out to all campuses by maintaining the integrity of the old structure. The multipurpose and the Student Center will serve as a meeting center for the school board. It will also house meeting rooms for staff development and campus recognition along with the superintendent's office and Human Resources Office. This has been Tatiana Hernandez from AC2E Elementary.
Item three was covered extensively at the public hearing held at 6:15. So we don't have to cover that one. Item four, which is the 2022-2023 RGCGISD District Audit Report, or DAR, will be discussed by the Board and Executive Session as that falls under safety. Section seven, recommending approving the consent agenda. The Board has agreed to discuss the following items. All of the items below that are not called out will be approved by consent. Consent agenda item number one, consider to take possible action on donations to Rio Grande City GRUISD. Do you have any discussion or motion on item one?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the consent agenda item one. If we could just, not necessarily have the amounts, if the people who donated at least have the names of the people who donated to our district.
Mr. Lopez, will you give the names before I call for a second?
Good evening. The following donations were for the month of February from Luis R. Garza, DBA Zapata Road Runners Road Racing, San Isidro PTO, and Jean HHAAS Foundation. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second to that motion? Second by Mr. Pope, all is in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Action item number two, consider to take possible action on travel requests from after-school centers on education, ACE Department, Gruia Middle School, and Ringo Middle School. Do you have any discussion or motion on item two?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item two and three as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela to approve items two and three. Is there a second to that motion?
I have a question on that one.
All right, go ahead.
Is that, Mr. Peña, what we're going to discuss? I had asked you, oh, I think last week, about what's going to happen with the Gruia Middle School. When are we going to discuss that?
These are travel requests, students and faculty.
Oh, okay, so this is, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
That is correct. All right, so.
I just have one question.
Any further discussion required?
Is there supplement to this one for item two?
No, none of this one.
Might have missed it. You know what, I think I found some details on it.
I believe they're just travel requests for kids, children, and teachers and things to go, training and in some cases, I believe that the grants are paying for some of these trips that they're taking.
There was a motion by Mr. Varela, second by Mr. Pope, all is in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item number four, consider to take possible action on pay application, number one, for Ringo Middle School resurfacing project payable to Hellas Construction. Do you have a motion, any discussion on item number four?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and 10 as presented in our board packet with any discussion.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela to approve items four through 10. Is there a second to that motion?
I have a question for item five. The tax collections for the month of February 2023. That is already, we're already being taxed for the bond?
That's item number, item five?
Item five, tax collections of the month of February.
That's not what I'm showing, that's item five, I'm sorry. It's a pay application. I don't know what number you're looking at.
Number four is a pay application, five is a pay application, six is a pay application.
Page three.
It's on page three? We're on their action items.
They're all pay applications. I'll second the motion.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela, a second by Mr. Peña, is there any discussion required?
Just, these pay applications, where's the money coming from on that one, on this one? Do we know?
The Robles?
The funding.
For which items, are there's items four through 10?
Yeah, there's quite a bit.
They wouldn't come from the same, they said nothing to do with the bonding, that's?
Yes, some are bonding, sir.
They're all for the?
Most.
Most of them are for the resurfacing project.
Right. And with the track, the re-roofing and then the balcony?
Four, five, six is bond.
The ones for the balconies, items eight and nine, they come from the high school settlement funds for safety reasons.
And who decides all this? It's you, you with, along with who?
Administration.
Administration, like who?
Mr. Peña.
Mr. Peña?
Yes.
Yourself, just?
The directors that are in each programs. Like for example, on the use of, you know, item number four, five, and six, we're looking at resurfacing of projects. That would be our director, Mr. Reida Ramirez. So he's the one that submits it to us as a decision-making form. And from there, we look at funding, Mr. Robles verifies that we do have that funding. It does follow all guidelines. So then I review and we meet together before any item goes to the board.
If I may add, all of these have also been bitten out before and approved by the board. So all of this has been approved and reviewed by you all. This is just so that we, you can approve payment on these projects as most of these applications need to be certified either by the engineer or the architect.
So basically, the way it works, Mr. Robles, you bring a project to the board, then they approve it. Once we approve it, then any subsequent payments have to be approved by the board
Yes.
for that particular project, whatever that project is, correct? Let me just ask one question, Mr. Ramirez, what is the warranty on that, on that? On whether track, could I ask, now that we're?
The warranty on the track is one year, sir.
The one they're doing at Veterans?
Yes.
How many?
One year.
One year total?
Total, yes. If there's any defects or anything that we notice is not done properly, then they come back and fix it to our liking.
So it's a one-year labor, parts and labor, I guess?
Correct, pretty much a one-year.
Let the minutes reflect that Mr. Velazquez is now present at the board meeting. Okay, so there's a motion by Mr. Varela, a second by Mr. Peña. All is in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, so signify by raising your left. Are you staying, Dr. Pereira?
That was for four, five, and six?
Four through 10.
I have a question.
Sure.
Still the same questions from last time. I'm wondering, they, for eight, nine, and 10, they did bid those out to different companies, right?
Mr. Lopez?
Because I keep seeing the same CH, LH engineering doing a whole bunch of contracts.
Yes, that is Mr. Cloro Miro Inojosa. He's the engineer who helped us on the design of those rail extensions for the Rio High and Gruia High Schools.
Okay, and my question was, we did get different bids for that?
For professional services, you don't bid out those services that is against the law. So we only request qualifications and then if approved by the board, we grant that project to the engineer or architect.
Okay.
If I may, just quickly, the way it works is attorneys, architects, and engineers are exempt from the procurement process because you want to, you don't look at best value, you look at the most qualified person. So in those, administration has, they can make a recommendation and then the board approves it. But you don't, you don't go out for bids. You just do requests for qualifications if needed. But many times, architects, engineers, and attorneys, they're the people that you trust and you've trusted for many, many years. So normally, you don't, you don't go out for bids for those. And again, like Ms. Robles says, it's against the law to go out for bid because you could get a Mickey Mouse attorney come sit here for $5 an hour, but you'd get a Mickey Mouse attorney. But again, it applies to attorneys, architects, and engineers.
But you're right, you're spot on, sir, it's request for qualifications. You cannot put bids and things of that nature.
There was a motion by Mr. Varela, a second by Mr. Peña to approve items four through 10. I'll go ahead and call for the question again, all is in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 11, consider to take possible action on pay application, number seven, for RGCGISD Faculty and Student Training Center for Ringo payable to NM Contracting LLC. Do you have a motion or any discussion on item 11?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17 as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela to approve items 11 through 17. Do I have a second to that motion?
I have a question there.
Second by Mr. Peña, you may proceed with discussion, Dr. Pereira?
Yes, was this where we're going to discuss about the funds that were going to be used? The $5 million, the Estor funds, remember, about the middle school?
For which items?
Well, this is a... Okay, no, these are the ones that have already been bid out and they're just asking to pay out. Okay, never mind.
Any further discussion?
Just on 11 and 12.
Sure.
I think we had mentioned last time, there was some discussion of getting a Gantt chart for the progress, I think from NM and for Warren Group. That would be really useful to the board. I don't know if someone could reach out to them.
Mr. Lopez or Mr. Robles?
Yeah.
And we went up to 17?
Yeah, but this is for just 10 and 11 because this is, this is a, this is for Warren Group and for, and for NM Contracting. Could you request a Gantt chart from them? Because I know last time on the invoices, they get percentage of completion. But if we had a Gantt, it's not hard for them to produce. They have software to do it, just something that maybe we could follow along with it when they make the pay requests. That would be really useful.
And a great time to ask that, Mr. Peña. We do have a meeting with Loura Warren and her team tomorrow at 4:30. So I'll reach out to her first thing tomorrow morning and get that to you all, let's see where we can get your copies. So we will get that to you first thing. Well, I'll start working on it first thing in the morning and I'll do the same thing here with NM, with the multipurpose.
Thanks, I appreciate it if you put some pressure on them.
Motion by Mr. Varela, a second by Mr. Peña, all is in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. All, same sign, motion carries. Item 18, consider to take possible action on pay request invoice number 23-01-0191 for Faculty and Student Training Center payable to MEG Engineers. Do you have a motion, any discussion on item 18?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item 18, 19, and 20 as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela to approve items 18 through 20. Is there a second to that motion?
Seconded.
Second by Mr. Peña, is there any discussion required? There being, all those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, so signify by raising your left. Alright, with a vote of six to zero, I'm sorry, six in favor and one abstention by Dr. Barrera, motion passes. Item twenty-one.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr.?
Should be five. Mr. Varela, no, he's not here, right?
I apologize. Five in favor, one abstention.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Varela. Item twenty-one, consideration and approval of an order authorizing the issuance, sale, and delivery of Ruiya City Gruia Independent School District Unlimited Tax Refunding Bonds Series 2023, setting certain parameters for the bonds, authorizing a pricing officer to approve the terms thereof, levying a tax and providing for the security and payment of such bonds, and enacting other provisions relating thereto. Is there a motion, any discussion on item twenty-one?
Mr. President, before, there's a motion. Is there somebody who can give us a little presentation as how much we're going to save?
Our financial advisor, Mr. De Gherina is present. I've been told he's present. There he is.
Mr. Robert De Gherina is here to make a small presentation on this item.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Ramírez, members of the board, Mr. Peña and staff, we're the record. Robert De Gherina with De Gherina Galvano Lawrence, we are the school district's financial advisor. And I got the key word from Ms. Robles, a small presentation, so I'll be brief and not take too long. If you turn to page one, this item, again, it's a refunding. We're not here to increase the tax rate, the interest and sinking fund tax rate for next fiscal year. Refunding and refinancing, the goal is to lower the debt on the district's existing, they lower the interest rate on the district's existing debt. And the candidates on page two are $12,160,000 of the unlimited tax refunding bond series 2013. About $12,160,000. On page three, the candidates to refinance are the unlimited tax refunding bond series 2012, $3,55,000. Now, right now, we all know interest rates are going up, and they have been going up ever since March of 2022. This is a really key, important page right here on the graph of the 10-year. This is our benchmark. Yesterday, the Federal Reserve Fed Chairman Powell said that interest rates are going to continue to go up potentially, possibly later this month, March the 22nd. They're meeting in May, and they're meeting in June. So they're considering about, anywhere about 50 to 75 basis points. So the next three meetings, they're considering 25 to 50 basis points between now and June. So if you look at this graph, if you notice on March or February of 2022, March of 2022, that's when the Federal Reserve system started to increase interest rates. Even though, and again, this is a 10-year benchmark, what we in our industry look at as a guideline, is their refinancing opportunities for our clients. So even though the Fed started raising interest rates, you see every single day, pretty much every few weeks, rates are going up, then they come back down. If you notice, in the middle of this page, sometime after June, interest rates started dropping. Even though between March and June, for three months, the Fed increased interest rates almost 200 basis points. So what we're saying here, those candidates to refinance the debt on series 2012 and 2013 combined about $13 million and change, based on the current rates right now, it's not feasible to refinance the debt, lower it, the interest rate, and get into a lower rate where we can save money. But if we get ready, this agenda item allows us to work with your staff, Mr. Peña, Ms. Robles, and your bond counsel. Get the official documents, the offering documents, the POS, get these documents ready to go in case there's a dip, just like what happened in June. If you notice, from June, again, through September, even though the Fed started increasing interest rates, the market was still dropping. It could have been factor of inflation, unemployment, several factors that come in. The war in Ukraine caused the market to come back down. Market started going back up, and then you see sometime in December or actually October, we peaked, and then we started coming back down. Today, the 10-year is below 4%. So even though the Fed Chairman said yesterday, this is what we're looking at, potentially could happen, we still could see a drop. And if we do have a drop, if you go to the next page, on page five, it's the timetable of events. What we're going to try to do is get all the legal documents, financial documents, ready to go. And if this item is approved, this item allows us to get the documents ready to go, tee everything up in case the market drops. We can't refinance these bonds or price them until February the 15th and close after May the 15th, 2023. We can't price them right now. We couldn't have priced them in the fall of last year because they would have been taxable at much higher interest rates. So we have to wait until we get closer to May the 15th, 2023. So based on this timetable, and again, your staff has been really good about, we don't want to incur additional costs. We don't want to incur bond insurance costs, offering documents costs, bond rating costs. So what we're doing here is between March the 8th, if this item is approved, it allows us within the next six months, from March the 8th to September the 8th, that if the market drops 50 basis points or more, and we're able to achieve a 3% savings or higher, we can get this refinancing done. So again, March the 8th, if this item is approved, we start working on the offering documents, the legal and financial. And come April the 7th, about a month from now, if we're able, if the interest rates have dropped, we're able to submit the documents to the rating company, the insurance company, and if savings, and again, on April the 7th, the 12th, and April the 14th, the 20th, if savings is achieved, that we're able to meet the parameters that your bond counsel has prepared in those legal documents, and sell the bonds, we'll close the financing price on April the 20th. And at that meeting, because if this item is approved, we don't have to come back because it's a parameters resolution. The documents will be signed on April the 20th by the board president, by Mr. Peña. We don't have to come back and seek approval. This item is saying if we can meet the savings parameters, 3% or higher, not exceed an interest rate, I believe, of 3.6% or higher, and get this refinancing done, potentially price the 20th and close on May the 18th, which is, which is within 90 days of the call date. And I apologize, the call date is August the 15th, 2023. So we close within that timeframe, and both financings would be tax exempt. And again, if we get to April the 7th, and the rates are just skyrocketing up, they're just continuing to go up, this financing, neither one will happen. There will be no additional cost added to the district whatsoever. All we're doing is trying to get the documents ready to go in case what happened in the summer happens in the next six months. That we're able to get everything done, submit the documents, and within 10 working days, get a bond insurance, a bond rating, and get a bid on the insurance to get the refinancing done, and close the financing if it occurs within the next six months. If not, nothing happens within six months, this result, this item expires. This action expires. And if rates for, for some reason were to drop sometime in late September, we have to come back and get reapproval to get these refundings done. If for any reason rates drop, inflation is out of control, the war in Ukraine is out of control, now it's going nuclear weapons, that can cause the market to drop. So again, all it is, is just allowing us to get everything ready to go, that if rates drop, we can get this refunding done.
Can I ask a couple of questions? A 3% decrease or basically savings would represent how much per year and how much in the totality?
The, the overall, on page two, the overall net present value savings at 3% minimum on the $12 million financing on page two is about $365,000.
So we, so we'd save $365,000?
Yes, sir. And that's net of the cost of issuance.
Okay. Let me ask a next question.
Yes, sir.
For doing all this stuff, you're not going to charge us anything? In other words, to getting us to the, to the start line, you're not charging us a penalty?
No, sir. Our, the consultants, bond counsel, FA, you only get paid if a financing occurs. We don't have an hourly rate, we don't have a retainer rate. And that's the same way it is with the city. Only if a financing is priced and approved by the body, the issuing body.
So if, if we're to make a motion and say, we approve this with this motion on this particular item, with the caveat that we have to have at least a 3% savings, otherwise we don't go forward, you would not have a problem with that, correct?
Right, yes, sir. Only if we achieve, and again, keeping the cost of it. Yes, sir, 3% or higher.
Or better. Okay.
I just, just, I'll make it quick. So you're, you're asking us, we're refinancing the 2012, 2013 series?
Yes, sir.
The 2011, 2012. Do you remember what the interest was on that one that we captured?
Uh, yes, on the 2012, this would be the one that would be qualifying for permanent school fund bond insurance, $3,55,000. If you notice on page three, the interest rate attached to that financing is, on the right-hand side, about five lines up, 2.72%. That's the average interest rate on that financing. And on page two, Mr. Peña, that's a great question. On page two, the interest rate on the $12 million and change series 2013 financing is 3.57%. That was done 10 years ago. And again, right now, for the 2013, the financing on page two, an interest rate of 2.94%, and on page three, 3.13%.
So you're using the 2.94% for the MPV or the?
Uh, on page two, that's the rate that we would have attained. We're in the market about a week ago. We would get 2.94%. And if you notice on the bottom, we have it shaded in blue, we don't achieve a 3% present value savings. We're at 2.274%. So we're well below it. So that's why nothing can happen until we hit that mark or better.
And savings is inverse to the treasury, right? To the, savings is inverse to the treasury. So the treasury goes up or savings goes down?
Yeah, the, yeah, the, say, the interest rates go up, saving goes away. Absolutely. It's the same, the same concept with refinancing our mortgage home. If we have an interest rate of 5%, we want to go out there, refinance it if rates are 4%, 3.5% or better. If we can save money every month.
Cool. So I think today, you just wanted, you were asking to get the parameter order, right?
Yes, sir.
For the limited official statement. So we do the POS, so it basically, in essence, what the motion is, it's to, is to authorize you to issue the POS and then to move forward with the market with a 3 to, 3 to 5% rate. So you won't be coming back or you will be?
We won't be coming back because, again, you gave us strict instructions. It's got to be 3% or higher.
I just wanted to make that clear to the board.
Yes, absolutely.
You're going to take off in the three. So then, what if next year, the market, the treasury note falls, are we able to reissue?
Uh, we can refinance. And the key word was next year. We would have to come back when the market comes down and ask for reapproval. This would be the same agenda item being considered by the board. It's called a parameters resolution, and allow the consultants' work or staff only for six months. So once this item is approved, it expires on September the 8th. If the market drops in the fall or drops a year from now, we have to come back and seek reapproval.
So this item is only good for six months, correct?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
There's just one, just one clause in here, says levying a tax and providing for the security and payment of such bonds. We're not going to be levying a tax, right?
No, sir. It's just a continuation. That's standard legal language with school bonds is just continue, ad valorem, school bonds, that's part of the language. We're not increasing the tax rate or refunding. What we're trying to do is lower the rate, which lowers our annual payments, which saves the taxpayer and the district money.
Okay, I'm just saying, we're not granting that authority. I just want to make that clear, right? We don't want to end up in that situation.
So let's say we save $325,000. Does that represent a savings to, I guess, the taxpayers? Or?
Yes, sir. That would be a portion of that. And again, at $325,000, I know it's an example, we still wouldn't be able to do page two. But if we hit the mark, if we hit 3% or more, that savings is going, trickles down to the taxpayer, but also to the state, TEA.
Right, exactly.
Because the district receives 20% state aid. So since they're paying for 20% of your debt every year, 20% of the annual savings goes to the district. And it allows them, and I think Mr. Peña asked a great question, Ms. Robles, a couple of weeks ago, is there any state assistance, IFA available, instructional facilities allotment? No, there isn't right now available for any school districts. But when, school districts refinance their debt, they're able to save locally, but they also save for the state. That money goes into a pot that maybe one day, they could say, after all these savings that the district's done, we can have an allotment.
So it's a win for the taxpayers and a win for the state, correct?
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Yes.
Just because I'm mute here. So this is the first time this is being, this is in the agenda, right?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm wondering, did we contact you? Do you do this for the districts? Do you contact us? My question, like for everything else, is are we getting the, because there's a lot of financial institutions like yours that does this. Did we shop around? Did we get the best, you know, that there is?
We actually identified this refunding last year, sometime about August or so. Even though we couldn't do it, we identified and sent it to staff and saying, if these interest rates hold steady, sometime in April 2023, if interest rates are still the way they are in August and 22, we can refinance this for savings. So we've been monitoring this for well over six months. And we had just, I think, maybe a few months before, the board had hired us as the district's financial advisor.
Let me ask Ms. Robles. We've refinanced bonds in the past, correct? And we've sold bonds and then come back and we, we refinanced them, saved some money. We've done that in the past, correct?
As a matter of fact, Mr. Varela, y'all have refinanced seven refundings, seven refundings where y'all have lowered the interest rate on your debt and saved money for the taxpayer and for the state for a total amount of $103 million and change.
Wow, okay.
And again, that's the principal amount, not the savings. But you've had seven refundings overall.
Yeah. I'm just hurting that we caught this a little late.
Sir?
I'm just hurting that we caught this a little late.
When we, even though rates were lower a year ago, we couldn't refinance it because we have to close the financing within 90 days of August the 15th, 2023. If we, last year, when we identified it, these refundings couldn't be tax exempt, they would have to be taxable.
There's the tax exemption.
Absolutely. And back in 2019, the president then changed that law to say, you can no longer do advanced refundings as tax exempt. If you're going to do a refunding and you close, and that closing date is well over 90 days before the call date, you have to do them as taxable. So the taxable between tax exempt and taxable is 100 basis points plus different on the borrowing interest rate.
So then I would just move to just modify the motion to set the parameter for the bonds at the 3 to 5% as stated.
So you want to make the new motion, Mr. Peña? Alright, so there's a, there's a amended motion by Mr. Peña. Is there a second to that amended motion?
Second.
On, on this, on this thing, you put it's six, six months in exhaust, correct, on this?
Yes, sir. And it's, it's a standard.
Then I second his motion.
Yes, sir.
Actually, I think Velasquez already did, so. Let me go ahead and ask, call for the question. Alright, all those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. De Gherina.
Thank you, Mr. Ramírez. Members of the board, appreciate the opportunity to represent the district as your FA. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Have a great evening.
Likewise. Alright, item 22, consider to take possible action on tax refunds for the month of February 2023. Do we have a motion, any discussion on item 22?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item 22 and 23 as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela to approve items 22 and 23. Is there a second to that motion?
Good evening, Mr. Ramírez.
Yes, sir.
It's because on, on that item of the requisitions, I have an addendum. So I wanted to see if we can take it forward.
Yes, of course.
With your permission.
Of course.
I texted you on the items.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Then I would like to amend my motion to basically on item 23 to include the addendums that have just been presented to us.
Okay, there's amended motion by Mr. Verriell to approve items 22 and 23 with supplements. Is there a second to that motion?
Second, subject to discussion.
Second by Mr. Peña. You may proceed with discussion, Mr. Peña.
It's just the, with the addendum, 357772, NM Contract.
Okay.
Uh, yes, we took that, we brought that to the board last month. And we, it was what was being negotiated. So with the amount came down from $1,013,000 to the amount you see there of $975,983. So that's where we're bringing it back to the board.
Maybe we could refresh the board's memory. It was on the?
The welding addition at Rio High School, yes, sir.
They already finished it, it's completed?
No, no, no. This is to award the bid. Yes, y'all gave me the authority to negotiate at the last meeting. So now we're bringing it back.
For them to get going.
Yes. And they barely submitted on Monday, so this is why we're having to present it here. They did not submit by Friday. And we don't want to prolong, welding is very, very popular at the high schools, and the longer we wait, students are gonna suffer at the end of the day.
So you brought it down by like 100?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Peña, I'm confused, the welding, what is it? What are you talking about, the welding addition?
It's an addition at Rio Grande City High School. Right now, the students, as we mentioned last, at the last meeting, they have to go to early college for the class. And there's only a certain amount of slots there. So here, we went out on bids and we got to negotiate the price, and we're now bringing it back to the board to approve that.
What item is that?
The, the first one, ma'am. It's over $5,000.
Okay.
Item 23, item 23.
Got it.
I just want to say, it was nice to see that the Ringel Middle Gym was being refurbished, the floors. That was very, just have to throw that out there. Any further discussion?
Is there some type of plan that we get to see for this $975?
Yes, sir. A plan for?
Again chart, maybe?
No, 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 more like a, what are they building?
The floor plan. It's an additional classroom, sir, outdoor, because it's a welding class. So it's a welding shop, very similar to the one at Ringel Middle School.
But this is for only Rio guys?
Only Rio High School, sir. That's where the need is.
I think at the Rio High School, they go to the, the maintenance department. They bus them to the maintenance department.
Mr. Peña, in the career and technology presentation, I didn't see any welding. That's where we would be presenting anything going on, right? The career and technology?
Which presentation?
The one that we had with Mr.?
The video? Those were only some of the highlights, but we do have.
But our welding program is up and running and going and good.
With STC.
We, in fact, we have dual enrollment with STC.
Doctor Barrera, I'm the one that presented that at the last board meeting. If you recall, that is when we had, I think we had four bids, and we had one company that ended up with the lowest bid. And I went into detail, the last board meeting, as to that company was just too low. So when we, when we met with that company, we found out that they were missing about
Yes, I remember.
five or six different things. So we had to, as they deny their bid. So at that time, we went to the second bid, which was this company here in front of us. And then you all allowed permission to, the superintendent to, for us to go and to talks with them to see if they could lower it down. So they went from, originally, their, their bid was at $1,013,000, and they came down to this amount here in front of you today.
But, but correct me if I'm wrong, we do have dual enrollment with STC as far as welding. I think they have welding one. And in fact, when they graduate, they graduate with associate degrees, and some of them already go to the pipelines and things of that nature. But it's, it's not only, it's through, I believe, STC that we're doing our welding.
Yes, exactly. I mean, and it is a very popular program, and as we, I think Mr. Peña talked about it last time, these kids are having to be bused from Rio High School to Ringel Middle School to take the class.
Okay. I'm very, I apologize, I'm very ignorant on a lot of this stuff. And I actually requested a meeting with you because I, there's a lot of things that I want to discuss. So you do meet with board members and discuss issues like this beforehand, right?
If, in regard?
Like if I, I want to meet with you a day before the meeting so that I don't have to be asking all these questions, you know, in front of everybody, and you kind of can explain to me, you can do that for me?
In terms, when it comes to this, I know as, as long as Mr. Peña, I know usually, Dr. Barrera, when it comes to board members, you know, if they have a question, I know, I'll use as an example, the last board member that I talked to in regards to, to a concern was Mr. Velazquez. You know, a couple of weeks ago, he called me on one of the projects, you know, I, I gave him the answer, I got the answer for him and called them back and gave him the answer. I know that when you were asking for a meeting, and I'm sorry, I never did text you back, but I know you were communicating with Mr. Peña, you know, in regards to setting up a meeting. But yes, when, when board members call me like for a specific question, you know, I work on getting the answer and getting back to them. In terms of going over all the construction projects, I know he was looking to set up something where we could meet with you.
Mr. Salazar, do I have, do, do I have that type of authority? Can I meet or question somebody, or does it have to pass through Mr. Peña?
It has to pass the superintendent.
So I have to email him and then it has to go through them?
Right. I mean, even like myself, if I have a question on a bid, for example, I've had this with our athletic director before, or with our curriculum person, maintenance, they say, our architect, there's like Mr. López, they say, Mr. Salazar, you know, we have this problem. I, I mean, I'm, I'm a vendor. I go directly through the superintendent.
Okay.
And then the superintendent says, Mr. Salazar, let's meet with Mr. López, and we've done this before, or Mr. Salazar, let's meet with the athletic director, and we meet together as a party. But it's, it's improper for board members to go to a campus and go talk to a principal or go to the athletic director and talk to him, because board members, board members hire two people. Board attorney and a superintendent. So board attorney and superintendent answers to board members.
Okay.
Administration does not answer to board members. Now, like you said, if you have a question, hey, why did they close this school, or, or why did they, there's a disruption at this school, you can call people and they'll know. But if you want to meet and say, hey, I want to see where we're going, as a general rule, it's the, the governance is that we all go, including myself, through the superintendent. You'll never see me reach out to athletic director directly. I always get permission first, and then every time I send an email, if it's to the athletic director, curriculums, to Dr. Salinas, and I have pretty much every other day, we have communications, it always goes through the superintendent.
So no school board member will ever meet with one of them?
Not for purposes of school, for school business. Now, if you meet with them at a restaurant or say hi, that's different. But for purposes of school business, everything is funneled through the superintendent.
But you can request, like for, like, starting as a board member, request for some updates.
Yeah, exactly.
Whenever you want, you can call Mr. Peña and set up a meeting.
Right, if you have a question about any, any of the projects that the school district's doing, set up a meeting with Mr. López, but Mr. Peña ultimately is responsible, so he has to be there. Now, Mr. Peña says, you know what, go ahead and meet with them by yourself, that's right. But we all, I mean, I, I've worked with other districts, we always want to be on the same page. So whatever Mr. Peña tells you, he's gonna repeat the same thing to Mr. Peña, to Mr. Pope, to Mr. Velazquez, so that we're all on the same page.
I see.
Just a quick question, just to get back on track.
We take, we take questions.
The 975, the welding building will be available to all students or just Ringel Middle?
No, sir, it'll be at Rio Grande City High School.
High School, oh, okay.
Right now, all three high schools?
There's a Ringel Middle?
Have a welding program, all three high schools.
And they will be available to all students?
Yes, sir.
Oh, perfect, okay.
It, it is a, a class, Mr. Pope. The problem is just the travel. You know, I, in talking also to, to some of the staff in Rio High, there are students that want to take the class, but just that, you know, that driving over here and then having to get bused back, and it's a turnoff to some of the students. So now by having it offered and having, you know, if approved, having a welding class at Rio High School, it just, you know, win-win for the students.
What happened to the one at the middle school?
It's still there, sir.
Well, that's gonna be for the early college.
Okay.
The early college, well, I'm sure they're gonna take half the equipment away and leave half the equipment there.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the question, because we digressed enough. Item 20, okay, there's a motion by Mr. Verriell, second by Mr. Peña. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 24, consider to take possible action on awarding of the following bids, number 23-24 vehicle for Rio Grande City Gruia ISD Transportation Department. I have a discussion, any motion or discussion on item 24?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item 24, 25, 26, 27, 28 as presented in our board package.
There's a motion.
I, I have a question on that vehicle. It's, last time I questioned it, it's a pretty expensive vehicle.
I'm, I'm, hold on, gonna be, I'm trying to be very respectful, but you have to let me at least ask the question before you interrupt. I haven't even asked you, given you the floor. I, as board president, facilitate the meetings. And like I said, I've been very professional, respectful, but it's at least let me call the question.
Go ahead.
And I were second, and then I can, I'm definitely giving you the chance to discuss multiple times and extended time. So just extend me the same courtesy, please. So there's a motion by Mr. Verriell to approve items 24, 25, 26, 27, 28. Is there a second to that motion?
I will second the motion, but with a modification to include an addendum to the board pack for item 24.
All right, well, before you make that amendment, let me have Dr. Barrera proceed with her discussion.
And the thing is, because I don't know, suddenly, it kind of jumps off, and I didn't have a chance to say anything, that's why I interrupted. Okay, so yeah, I just had a question. If somebody can tell me about this vehicle? Who is it for, what is it gonna be used for? You know, does it have to be that, that vehicle?
So we went out for bids, like we do for anything that we do, and we did post it. We did have some vendors, if you can see on what I gave you all, it was a packet. If you go to the last page, we, we had some vendors that were interested, but only one submitted a proposal. And as you can see, it says submitted, spikes, number three. They were the only ones that, of course, submitted. So based off of that, we bring that to you all, and if you all, of course, approve, then we move forward with it. If y'all don't, then of course, we, we do not. In reference to this, the vehicle will be used for the current technology department, FFA.
The what, I'm sorry?
Career and Technology Department. It'll be for FFA, for the students that travel, you know how, for the fair. They have students that take.
But the students are gonna use it?
Well, the teacher?
Or travel?
The, the teacher that is in charge of FFA, Ms. Randy Martin, she is the one that uses the vehicle. The vehicle they currently have, they've been having a lot of issues with it. They do travel a lot. I know this past weekend, they were in Houston. Now they're currently in Mercedes, so because of that, they do tow or pull a trailer. So they've been having issues with that, so that's where we're going now.
So it's a necessity?
Yes.
Any further discussion? I know you wanted to make an amended motion issue, or Mr. Peña?
I just moved to amend to include the addendum in item 24, because it wasn't in the original board.
I have a question on item 25.
Yes, Mr. Velazquez.
Is this banquet for every single employee, Mr. Peña?
This one, sir, Dr. Salinas is in charge of this program.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ger.
Good evening, Mr. Board President, members of the board, Mr. Peña, superintendent of schools. To answer your question, Mr. Velazquez, this is the annual recognition banquet for outstanding service, so we include our, the pins of the 5, 10, 15, 20. At the banquet, we recognize the 25, 30, 35, and 40-plus, also all the retirees for the year. And this is, I think it's our 18th annual, so, yes, sir, that's exactly what it includes. And what you have in your package is just the, just in agreement with Mercedes Ballroom, and we wanted to save the date, March 10th, May 10th, I'm sorry.
Mr. Peña, I mean, it doesn't have to do anything with this, this item, but have we ever recognized the, the testing employees? I know they, they're doing a great job. Can we, I mean, have we, or?
Testing, you mean, at the campus level for the STAR test and TELPASS? They're part of the staff, so we recognize them when we have, you know, the monthly recognition, sir. So teacher of the month, of the month, of the year, you know, May is the month of teacher month, so that's when we recognize all, all teachers.
I know that every campus has a teacher of the month, so they get nine, nine or 10 recognitions, then they have the teacher of the year. But I know during the, because I always see it on the, some item, maybe Facebook, that this is a teacher of the, of the month for, we have teacher of the month for, for Roque Guerra and things of that nature. So I know they do have that, where they come out, basically. In fact, there was one today that HEB went out there and, and she's one of the top five finalists in the state of Texas, as being one of the best teachers in the state of Texas, or something like that, I read.
That's correct, sir.
I think on item 27, we have to mention that there's a big grant that we successfully obtained, is that correct, Ms. Morse?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, we need to hear about this, please.
We were notified, Mr. Peña and myself, we worked on an application back in December, Ms. Ayala, with a group of individuals, Ms. Gina Gonzalez, Ms. Nidia Benitez, Ms. San Juanita Olivares. We worked on the new grant that will be replacing T-Class that is called the Lasso. It's called Learning Acceleration Support Opportunities, and basically, it's still part of the COVID money that the TA has. And what it's going to do, it's going to help us continue the work that we've done with high-quality instructional material. So we're looking at the curriculum and instruction department, of course, this money goes straight to the campuses, receiving $4.5 million. $3.6 million will be in materials and consumables and online licenses. In addition to that, we got the strong foundations planning grant. We had our first kickoff meeting this morning, right, Ms. Ayala? And we were already doing strong foundations planning for E-LAR. Now we got the strong foundations planning for MAP. So we will be doing, it's called Cohort 2, is that what they're calling it? Cohort 2, and we will be receiving $200,000 for that planning. Most of the money stays in the, in the district. However, we do have to hire a technical support provider. So since we've made relationships with different people across the state, we will be engaging with the same providers because it saves us time, it saves us money. So instead of paying them more money, we're able to keep a little bit more money for the district to be able to do some of those things. We also will be receiving the tech lending grant, and Ms. Benitez was a great part of providing the information I needed for this grant. So we will be working with Ms. Benitez, and she will be receiving, together with the technology department under Ms. Gina Gonzalez, $225,000. We don't know if there's going to be specifics, and that's why I'm here today to ask for permission to continue with the next part, which is applying for our actual E-grant and setting up those budgets. I don't know if it's gonna be for computer devices, for pads, iPads, or what it involves, but it is having to do with equipment and devices, so I'm excited about that. We also received the blended learning grant in the amount of $500,000. And I'm really, really excited about this because if you know San Juanita Olivares the way I know her, she's very passionate about the work she does. So I think that the grant will only help us expand on what we're already doing. We already have a lot of things in place. So I think that's what helped us get that grant, because I brought her in, I said, okay, what do you already have in place? And usually what the state looks when you write a grant is, can you sustain this? Do you have some things in place? And will this just help you to continue to do your work? So I'm just really excited, because one of the things I realized very early on when I came onto the department was that there's not a whole lot of money, and if you want to do things, you got to find the money. So we've been finding lots of money in a lot of different places, like when Ms. Benitez called me, what do I do about the Laura Bush Foundation? I said, apply. Apply, 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 get it going, get the process going. The librarians were very receptive. So I think that if we want to continue to do great things, we have to find the money, and there's monies out there. You just have to look for them, apply, and just be very persistent. And one of the things that Ms. Ayala, myself, Dr. Salinas have realized is that you start building a network, and you call people that know people that know people, and that's really how it gets going. So one of the things is when they see that we're doing something well, we've been featured at different parts of the state, and people have come to visit. We even had one of our neighbors to the west, or to the east? No, to the east. One of the larger school districts to the east. I was like, no, that way. So they came to see how we were doing things for CCMR, so they came to visit with Ms. Carza and with Bob Martinez and Ms. Nora Escobedo, wanting to get ideas from us. So it feels good when people come to visit. That hadn't happened for us in a long time, so we're excited that we're able to help people that we always call to get answers from. So I'm excited about the four point five million dollars, so the item is just to ask for permission to continue to engage in the application process. The money's there now, we just have to apply to get the money.
So we got a four point five million dollar grant?
Yes.
Wow. It's a great initiative. It should be applauded.
We're excited.
All right. So there's a motion by Mr. Varia, second by Mr. Peña. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign. Motion carries. Item twenty-nine, consider to take possible action on request and permission to host poetry slam nights on March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, and April fourth, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion or any discussion on item twenty-nine?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Varia to approve items twenty-nine through thirty-one. Is there a second to that motion?
Seconded.
Second by Mr. Peña. Is there any discussion required? There are being none. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign. Motion carries. Item thirty-two, consider to take possible action on travel request for top accelerated reader trip. Do I have a motion or any discussion on item thirty-two?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-five as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Varia to approve items thirty-two through thirty-five. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Second by Mr. Peña. Any discussion required?
On item number thirty-three, can somebody just tell me real quick what that is?
Yes, I have Nora, or Elsa, thank you.
One of our other grants, like I said, in order to do things, we need grants. One of our other grants is the E-three plus grant, which allowed us to give incentive money to our leaders. We also were able to hire over thirty collaborative teachers within the district, and we have five lead teachers that work out of central office. Part of the grant is that we convene every three months at a certain part designated by the grant. The grant doesn't belong to us, we're just a partner of the grant, so this is required travel to comply with that particular E-three grant. So I think the visit this time, the last time was in New Orleans, this one is going to be in Washington, DC. It's a two-day trip. Usually, you have a meeting for one day, and then you dialogue another day, and then you fly back. So it's just a requirement for the E-three grant.
Got it. Thanks.
This is that one grant where we got all these towns like Decatur and all of a sudden.
Yes, it's the Decatur, that's the grant. And basically, there was an email that I read, and I was like, this can't be true. They want to partner with us, Mr. Peña, and they want to give us a million dollars, and I didn't think it was true. But it was.
You want a million dollars?
Yeah. So we said yes.
On item thirty-five, I know Adarina Barra is not present, but there's twenty senior students that get to partake in that academy. How are they chosen, you know?
This item is new, sir. They came to Ms. Varial to offer, the Texas Department of Human Services came to Ms. Varial to offer this service. So what this is, is they're going to apply through the counselors, and then they'll go ahead and select. But these students will be going through this training, and they are guaranteed a job after they graduate from high school and complete the training somewhere in the Rio Grande Valley.
Right.
So it's, you know, an excellent program.
It's a good big opportunity. I was curious to see how they were selected, but it's by the counseling department, then?
Well, they have to apply.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? There are being none. There's a motion by Mr. Varia, second by Mr. Peña. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign. Motion carries. Item thirty-six, consider to take possible action on advanced law enforcement rapid response training alert travel grant resolution. Do I have a motion or any discussion on item thirty-six?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item thirty-six, thirty-seven, and thirty-eight as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Varia to approve items thirty-six through thirty-eight. Is there a second to that motion?
Seconded.
Second by Mr. Peña. Is there any discussion required?
Can somebody discuss item thirty-eight? This is a new track at VMS.
Okay. Mr. Ramirez presenting.
Yes, ma'am. This is, again, the proposal to hire an engineer to do a testing at the track. As you notice there, it's a, you know, a better middle school, we're constructing a brand-new six-lane track. So what they do is they look out for the best interest of their school, and they test all the materials, all the soils, the concrete, everything that goes onto that track, they test to make sure it's done properly according to spec, and they look after our interest.
And this is to put out a bid for that?
No. This gentleman or this company's already been board-approved in the past, so we just got a proposal from them, and we're bringing it to a board for approval.
What company is it?
MEG Engineering.
MNG?
MEG.
MEG.
Correct.
And we are putting out the bids everywhere in the valley, right? Not just local?
That is, Ms. Robles, it depends on the project, miss. Some items, it all depends. Facilities, we do, and we'll continue to advertise those, but some of these can go to buy board. So buy board, the state already goes out on bids, and what the directors can do is look to see and have them get quotes, and they've already been bid it out, so we don't have to bid them out again.
I see.
So it depends on the project, the amount, and what the recommendation is.
Okay.